Can I have your attention, please? We'll be starting up shortly. Welcome to the Lowell Plant and Board meeting for Monday, November 21st, 2022. The first matter on the agenda is the approval for November 7th, 2022 minute. Any comments or corrections from the board members?
Mr. Chairman, I just have one correction, at least in the copy that I have. We have Sinead as being present and being absent, so I know she was not present. So if we could just...
Okay.
Yes. Strike her as being present. And with that, I'd make a motion to approve the minutes with that amendment.
Okay. Motion made.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Minute to approve as amended. So unfortunately, at this point in time, we have three board members. So we can vote on all the projects tonight, because all we need is a majority vote. So we have a site plan, a definitive subdivision, and a pre-application hearing. Two of our board members we have not heard from, so I don't know where they are. Usually everybody checks in with us, lets us know that they're not coming for any reason. So if somebody does not want to go forward at this point in time, and they want a full board, just let me know, I'd be more than happy to give you a new date. If somebody wants to wait a little while to see if another board member shows up, I can go to the pre-application stage and do that one first, which doesn't require a vote tonight, to see if anybody else filters in. But as a chairman, I'm willing to do whatever the applicants would request, so we're flexible either way. So on Wilbur Street, you want it to proceed as is, or do you want to wait a little while to see if anybody else shows up, or do you like a new date? Who's here from Wilbur Street? You'd like to go forward today? Okay. All right. Okay. So we have a site plan review on 70 Wilbur Street. Taste Bud Farms LLC has applied to the Lowell Plant and Board to operate an adult-use marijuana cultivation and manufacturing facility at the above address. The subject property is located in the light industrial zoning district. The proposed requires site plan review pursuant to Section 7.10 and Section 11.4 of the Lowell zoning ordinance. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening. My name is Casey Ferrara, I'm with Howard-Sine Hudson Associates. We are the civil engineering consultant for the project. I am joined tonight by Joe Reddy, the site owner, Dave Branko from Taste Bud Farms, and also an operations consultant, Dustin. As you mentioned, the site 70 Wilbur Street is located in the light industrial zoning district. It exists as just over about half an acre. We are proposing a change in use of Unit 2 to a marijuana cultivation facility. We'd also like to make clear that there is no manufacturing that is going to take place on-site. It's strictly just going to be cultivation. I know Dylan made it clear that the zoning sees them both the same, but we just wanted to make sure that you understand that no manufacturing will be taking place. Just to paint a little bit of the scene, Wilbur Street is just off of Stedman Street, kind of near the Chelmsford Line. And the 70 Wilbur Street building is located on the east side of the street, at the end of the pavement, basically right in front of the golf course. The existing building is a six-unit multi-tenant commercial building. Again, we are only proposing a change in use of Unit 2. And the site itself is proposed to remain exactly as existing. We don't propose any site changes, no grading, no pavement, with the exception of, we do plan on doing a little bit of landscaping, just to beautify the site, replace existing landscaping, just to make it look nice. The cultivation facility is considered a micro-cultivation facility, and there will be absolutely no retail on-site, so it is just the cultivation. Again, no retail, no manufacturing. And this use in the light industrial zone is a by-right use. And with that, I believe the only special permit reason we're here is just because it's a marijuana use. So we have filled out all of the marijuana applications and the site plan special permit requests for that. There are no proposed changes to the exterior building as part of this plan. The only change would be to mark the door for safety reasons, emergency medical personnel and stuff. There's no sign. The building will remain as exists. Again, just some light landscaping around the site to beautify. Site access will remain the same, and the majority of the project is all going to be interior renovation. The existing dumpsters for the site are located on the southeast corner, kind of where the golf course makes an L shape around the site. And the butters for the site include one residence, a gas facility across the street, a church, and the golf club right behind us. I would like to note there's an existing marijuana cultivation facility not far from the site, located at 181 Stedman. And as of that, I'd like to turn it over to Joe, the owner of the site, who can speak a little bit about Taste Bud, and we can answer any questions you might have after that.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to thank the members of the board for hearing our application tonight. It's much appreciated. I figure I'd give you a little background about who we are. My name is Joseph Reddy. I am the third owner of Taste Bud Farms with David Branko and Dan Cohen. I am also the owner of the property at 70 Wilbur Street. We came together as a group to put this project together. We're very excited to come into the city of Lowell. We think it's a great area. We're very excited about the talent pool that Lowell has, as well as its diversity. We think it'll make a great operation here in the city of Lowell. Dave, who is my business partner, is our head grower. Dave has been working in special education, working with kids on the autistic spectrum. He was the half-co-owner of a nonprofit seed that worked with autistic kids to help them gain skills in farming. And Dave has been an avid farmer for a long time, so he's very interested in building this operation. We did apply for a micro-grow, which is actually for small entrepreneurs to be able to get into the business, because many of these sites are very capital-heavy as far as site and building and whatnot. So we found Wilbur Street to be rather economical in comparison to all the other sites that met the zoning requirement. We feel that this will actually benefit the city of Lowell. We've executed a host agreement, which will benefit the city through financial resources. Obviously, once we have upgraded the property inside, it will bring up the tax revenue on the property tax and personal property tax. And we also plan on giving contributions to local nonprofits. We've talked with the Bridge Club, which is run by Troubled Waters, as a way of giving back to those that have been affected by drugs and alcohol, which we think is important. Our biggest factor here is that we want to make sure that we're good community partners. I have personally owned and operated a liquor store in the town of Chelmsford, North Chelmsford. I had a license for over five years, and I never had any incidents during that time period. We ran a great operation, we revitalized a building there, and we're hoping to do the same thing. We're willing to work with the city and anybody at the state level to try to make things work. And I think the biggest component for our cultivation is really just odor mitigation. So we have reached out and hired BLW engineers. Eric Gath, he has designed a system for us, which we provided to Dylan, to show how we plan on mitigating any sort of odor that may come from the site. And so that's very important to us. I have been in touch with the deputy chief, Mark LeBlanc, talked to him about our security plan, which I think is also the second most important piece. We do not want to be a nuisance to the neighborhood, so very important for us to make sure that the facility is protected at all aspects. We have reached out to the other departments to try to work with them, especially the waste and recycling committee, just so that we can talk to them about how we're going to get rid of our organics and things of that nature. A lot of that, we actually plan on keeping within the facility. Where we're such a small grow, we talked to our organics guy, and he can provide us with basically dumpsters that lock, that he will come and pick up on a regular basis. He could do it daily if he wanted to, but we will work with him to make sure that that is safe, secure, and taken care of regularly. With the exception of that, we are excited to bring this forward. Again, we look at this as more of a fit-out for the actual building, and hoping that we can get your approval tonight. We'll leave it for any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak on behalf of the applicant? No? Okay, so I'm just going to go quickly through my checklist. So you received the host agreement, you got the okay from the police department, you got the okay from the fire department, you got the okay from the recycling and waste department, you did give us the odor plan. I think the only comment they said that they'd like to see if you could get the stormwater plan, which...
So we have been in touch with the stormwater team.
Okay.
I haven't been able to get into a meeting with them yet.
Okay.
I need to basically bring the site to them and work with them to determine what they'd like and what we can agree upon.
Okay.
But as far as that goes, we don't, there's no actual site changes, so we don't anticipate there being any real change to the site plan as part of that. So if necessary, we'd just like that to be a condition of approval to satisfy the stormwater team.
So then, what you're saying is obviously you'd be willing to work with the stormwater review, take the stormwater permit.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So just one quick question is, when I was visiting the site, what's directly across the street from here? What's, you know, to the left of that church? What type...
That's a national-grade gas facility.
Oh, because I could see the pipes above the line, the ground and going and everything, and all the construction was going on, and golf clubs over there, and like, what's going on there? I couldn't, you know, it was kind of a weird-looking building, I couldn't figure out just by looking at it, but there was a lot of construction going on there.
They just went through a lot of construction.
It was like two, probably there two, three weeks ago.
I'm not sure exactly what they were doing, but there was a lot of construction over there for a bit.
Yeah, because, see, they were all above ground, and I'm like, that kind of looks different. Don't see much of that in the city, so I'm like, what's going on there? And then to the right of that was the church and everything else. And I know when I pulled up there, you had your sign right in the front, so what we do is make sure that's there, so, okay, thank you. So just...
The National Grid is actually, it's a large construction project that they're working on, and they've published between the Lowell facility, which is a transfer station, and their Tewksbury facility.
Okay, thank you. Who's speaking, please?
Mary Ann Dusnisky.
Okay, thank you very much. So at this point in time, I'm going to turn it over to the public. Anybody here want to speak in favor of this project? In favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none? Anybody like to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none? At this time, I'll turn it over to the board members to see if they have any questions or comments.
I have one question.
Yes, Mr. Lockhart.
Regarding the number of employees that you anticipate, and how might that grow? And what would be the consequence, the impact on parking availability? Transportation engineer made a comment about that as well.
Do you want to talk to the employees, and I can talk about the parking?
So we anticipate hiring probably one full-time person, and then probably two part-time people. Basically, the way that the operation works is that Dave will be there doing most of it himself, and then we'll have a full-time person that will be there to help him. But the only other time will be when people come in to help with trimming and things of that nature, and it's probably at off-hours. So I do also own Unit 1, which actually only has one person working out of it, so we actually do have additional parking as a result of the site. But we don't anticipate, it's a micro-grow for a reason, because it's not supposed to be a huge operation, so if we do grow, we will probably either take over more of the building and come back to you, or we will probably find another site in Lowell that would be bigger for us to move into, so...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Fichette?
Just for clarification, because I did read the 45-page material here that you provided, and under "local hiring," it says, "The facility activities owner expects to hire 15 to 20 full-time staff for facility Lowell, along with another 5 to 10 part-time employees." You know, and it gets into talking about local hiring, which is all great, so I'm just trying to reconcile what you just said.
Yeah, and I apologize. So when I executed the host agreement with Eileen Donahue, I think they used the calculations from another cultivation facility at the time, and I just didn't catch it in the actual write-up when it went through, so... But we've always intended to have a small group of people working out of there.
So what's your number, because I would intend to make it a condition, because that's not what you, that's not what's in writing.
Yeah, no, I understand. So I would say probably no more than four.
Four, okay, all right. Because the parking is a little tight.
Yeah, I completely understood. Yeah, that, I, it just, when we started, this was a long time ago, and I think it was one of those where the boilerplate host agreement got thrown out there, and so...
Understood. And then, kind of separate from site plan, but, so I was intrigued looking at your pro forma. Am I reading this correctly? Are you looking at income going down over? You're looking at your price per pound?
Well, we had run three different...
Just a little confused looking at it.
We ran three different scenarios, but we also anticipate that with the number of cultivation facilities that are going to be opening up, that, you know, the product will probably not be as valuable as, you know, more product becomes available, just, I mean, we had to be realistic about it.
Well, no, I appreciate that. I, that's, I prefer to see that than to have some projections that don't seem to fit reality, so, no, I just wanted to make sure...
Yeah, no, we, we want to make a good living out of it, but I don't, you know, with the size of the facility, I don't think it's a, you know, it's going to be a huge...
Right, right, no, understood, understood. And you did provide the landscaping. I guess I would just be looking to make a condition that you would work to finalize that as it unfolds with DPD.
Yeah.
Make sure that we get, it's an opportunity, you know, and I know it's a little bit isolated where that is over there, but it's, you know, again, we always say that if we improve each property at a time, then it's amazing, the transformation that can take place even in an industrial area, so it's just a great opportunity to... And I do know you do provide a landscaping plan for that, kind of like an island that's right in the, right along the road.
Yeah, we'll, we'll upgrade that, for sure.
Sure, all right. Good, no, I think we, as the chairman indicated, we received everything that we were looking for from staff. We also typically, with these facilities as a condition, you know, there are state requirements for odor mitigation.
Yeah.
There are standards, you provided this material as well, but we do usually, as a standard, put in there that, subject to city standards as well, just in case. We have run into facilities where, quite frankly, they didn't keep up to the state standards, and they didn't, and as a result, coming before this board, we went out on the site and picked up the stench of the product.
Yeah.
That was far beyond what should have been. So anyways, we typically have that as a condition, a local condition as well.
And we're open to that.
Sure.
I think my partner could tell you that I've been adamant about the fact that odor mitigation is our top priority, so that no one should even really know that we're there, to be honest with you, other than just, you know, running the operation as normal, so...
Right, exactly, yeah, good, all right, good. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'm pretty satisfied, I'd like to say I checked off everything at the man, what they needed, and, you know, just to follow up what Jerry said about the odor plan, is how, so the reason why we put it as a condition, so, I know it has to be approved by the Cannabis Control Commission, but this way, if we have an odor that's coming from one of the projects that we approved right here in the city, the city can call the applicant and deal with them directly, instead of saying, well, we're waiting to hear from Boston, and then we're like, well, what's going on there? Well, we don't know, we don't know, we don't know. So if, if there is an issue, and in the past, when we did have an issue, what the applicant had to do is go in, put on new filters in, clean everything up, they didn't have a schedule to maintain any of that stuff in the past. It was one of the first ones that was approved here in the city, and didn't even have to come before us, it just had to get an occupancy permit, so it was just approved, and, I mean, we went down there, and Jerry and myself could smell it before we even get out of our cars. I mean, it was like, whoa, like, and then they're like...
I remember the conversation.
And so, and then, and then, again, after we had all that done, one of the other board members would buy, you could smell it again. So that's why we'd like to be able to work locally and say, hey, you know, we've approved this, if not, we have some teeth in the matter as well. And obviously, I know you have to get the odor plan, so usually most people are satisfied with that, but just gives us a little extra teeth on the local level side, so we can say, hey, can you go back and fix this, instead of saying, well, we're working on that, and kind of leaves us out of the realm of what's going on. So this way, we can act quickly and locally, and, you know, and usually, most of the time, I'm sure, in something the size of this unit, it wouldn't be, it shouldn't be hard to fix something, because it's not going to be a big, over-sized product, where, you know, between the ventilation, the sealing it off, or whatever you have to do to make sure that it's under control. So besides that, I have no problems with it. You know, it's, like you say, it's in the light industrial, it's by right, you got all the approvals from all the apartments, and you want to work with the stormwater, and landscaping for DPD, so I'm satisfied, I have no further problems.
I am satisfied as well, I just had one...
Sure, Mr. Lockhart.
Because it was on the memo we had about lighting, outside lighting. That would typically maybe include it in the landscaping plan, but you could comment on that.
Yeah, they have pretty good, I mean, each unit has its own, you know, lighting source for it. I mean, it is part of a commercial condominium, so, you know, we try to keep it all somewhat conforming, so that everybody's unit looks similar, but at night, it is pretty lit up over there. But we certainly can add, you know, additional lighting if you think that's necessary.
Fine, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, what we could do is either have DPD look at that, when they look at the landscaping plan, and see if they, if, you know, how it comes together, because if they're out there looking at the landscaping, sometimes they can, because sometimes the way the landscaping plan is designed too, lighting could change just a little bit, sometimes to highlight something or change a certain, light this to a different direction. Okay, thank you, all right. So, plus the request of the board, we have a site plan, no other special permits, so there's one vote for the site plan.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the site plan with the following conditions. The applicant shall obtain approval from the city of Lowell Stormwater. Review team prior to applying for billing permit. The facility will have no more than four employees.
Four to five.
Four to, yeah, I guess, four to five employees.
Give you a little great spirit.
Yeah. And final landscaping plan and lighting plan to be submitted and approved, submitted to DPD staff and approved by DPD staff. And then odor mitigation plan as presented to be adhered to, subject to city approval on an ongoing basis.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor?
I'll second that motion.
Motion second by Mr. Lockhart. All in favor, say aye.
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 Chair, vote yes. Any opposition? Hearing none. The motion is approved. Good luck and wish you well.
Good luck.
You're welcome. Okay, moving along on the agenda, the next matter is the definitive subdivision. This is for 42B Street. Tyler Provos has applied to Lowell Plant and Board to subdivide the existing lot and construct a two-family home on the newly-created lot. The property... The property is located in the traditional two-family zoning district. The newly created lot will not meet the minimum frontage requirement pursuant to Section 5.1 of the Lowell zoning ordinance. The project requires definitive subdivision approval from the Lowell Planning Board under Lowell subdivision of regulations. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Hello, my name is Jeff Sargis, the architect. This is Tyler Provost. We have an eleven thousand four hundred square foot lot that we'd like to subdivide into a five thousand four hundred and six thousand square foot lot. Through zoning, we got, we applied for variances for front yard setback, side yard setback on the existing structure, and rear yard parking setback. All of those were preliminary approved with a modification that we have a privacy fence along the rear lot yard. The new build is going to be two three-bedrooms with two parking spaces each. The approximate build is two thousand two hundred square feet. Thank you.
Does anybody else want to speak on behalf of the applicant? Okay.
Thank you, summarize it well.
Okay. Okay, so at this time, I'll turn it over to see if anybody in the public would like to speak. Anybody want to speak in favor of the definitive subdivision for forty-two B Street? Anybody in favor? In favor, in favor? Hearing none at this point in time? Anybody like to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none at this point? I'll turn it over to the board members.
I have a question regarding.
Yes, Mr. Lockhart?
Stormwater permit. What is the status of that?
So we, the civil engineer has designed a underground retention tanks for that, and we have not submitted that yet, but preliminary reviewed with them, and they said it looks okay.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lockhart.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Sure. Just following up on that stormwater, the other note says, "The proposed plan does not seem to indicate a sewer connection."
Oh, yeah.
Do we have a sewer connection?
Yeah, it should, that's.
It said, yeah, so what we got from staff says the plan didn't show the sewer connection.
Okay.
Obviously, that's important.
I'll have the civil engineer update that, that would be needed.
Okay, okay. Mr. Fichette, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I just thought when I was looking at the stormwater.
Oh, no, no, that jumped out.
Kind of, yeah, if you don't have the sewer connection.
That would be an issue.
Yeah, that wouldn't sit well, no.
On the, did you see the comment letter of September twenty-seventh from DPD staff? At all?
Probably, could you?
Okay, so item number five, it says, "The rear left of proposed Lot A and the rear right of proposed Lot B were indicated as green space on the plans approved by the ZBA. The plan before the planning board indicates that it will now be gravelled." Can you elaborate on that?
No, we still have it as green space. We don't count it towards any of the usable open space, just because of the volume of it, but it will be, grass will be pervious.
So Peter, can you just, why TBT thought that? Because I was looking at the plan, and it looked like it was grass, but then I'm confused. I just want to make sure we didn't miss anything.
That is grass, and maybe it was printed black and white?
Yeah, the dark color, I'm assuming is the grass.
Right, correct. And that's still going to be case, it'll be.
Yeah, I think that was just a mistake on my part.
Okay, great, that's fine. Just want to make sure I didn't want to miss anything. And we've had these in the past, what I do like is what was submitted, we got the GIS that shows the other surrounding lots, it's in keeping with the neighborhood, matter of fact, and I went out there to take pictures as well, but most of these lot frontages are forty-foot lot frontages, which really, you know, puts it in line with the character of the neighborhood, the physical character of the neighborhood. Peter, I like the way you described it too, it was lots that weren't corner lots, so I think that came up from the last time. Yeah. So I think, as presented, other than the fact, obviously, stormwater approval is needed, and we cleared up the paving here. Yeah, I think that's fine. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So I'm happy to see you here tonight, because I know we missed you in October.
Yeah, sorry.
I said to staff, I said, "What happened?" And he said, "Oh, they apologized, I didn't make it." I can honestly tell you, that was the first time that, I made the recommendation to place it on file, which has never been done here before, never, never been done. And Jerry's like, "What's that?" I said, "Well, that means we can let them come back." Because if you come in and don't give us the questions and the answers we have, and we usually voted down, then you have to wait a minimum of two years to come back.
We'll make sure that we clarify our thirteens and threes next time, so.
What was that?
We'll make sure that we clarify our numbers next time, the thirteen, three.
So I said, to staff, I said, well, I said, they said, "No, they're going to be here, they apologize and everything else." I said, "Okay, no problem." I said, "Did they change the sign out front?" Because, I said, usually, because I usually just put a piece of tape on the change of date, and staff goes, "Oh, yeah, they changed the date." I said, "Okay," so, you know, but I said, "You were pretty embarrassed saying that, yeah, we forgot about the night," so.
Yeah.
So we kept it alive, I figured, by doing that. The board member was like, "Yeah, we'll give them a chance to come back," you know, give you a chance to be heard, so.
Just to put that in perspective, the chairman's been on the board since the nineteen eighties. Mr. Lockhart's been on since the late nineties, and I've been on for sixteen years, so it's not often that something like that happens.
So when I made the motion, they're like, "What's that?" I said, "Well, I'll give them a chance to come back." So I said, you know, so, yeah, so we gave you the benefit of the doubt, you know, and... So the only question I have is, just looking at the plan, how are you going to do your parking?
So we have an access easement right in between the two properties, so it'll be on one lot, twelve feet, and then that's how the parking behind the existing house will access it, and then the four spaces behind the new builds will be on that same, will be on their property.
Okay, so, let me hold it. So an existing house is here now, you're going to have to park behind it?
Yes.
So you have a pretty wide driveway there now, right?
Yeah, I think it's like twenty-five feet.
Yeah, so, yeah, by looking at, you know, you can see the driveway, then here's the sign, and then here's all the open space behind there.
Correct.
So is that big driveway going to stay there together, or is that going to be changed by any chance, I mean, pulling in, or?
It's going to be cut down.
Okay.
So it's going to be down to twelve feet.
So you'll have what? And that driveway is going to be a mutual driveway?
Correct.
And then they're both going to go in that way and then parking the rear?
That's correct.
Gotcha. Yeah, because I saw how big the driveway is, I'd love to be stacked parking there at first, and how that would be, and then stacked parking can always be difficult if someone has to leave early to the next person.
Yeah, it's a little inconvenient, then someone doesn't clear the snow, and so.
Well, basically, it would be what we call a common driveway then.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. I know we've allowed them in bigger residential areas, which I'm not a big fan on, because we've had ten thousand square foot lots that come in and need a common driveway, I'm like, "You got a lot that big, you should find your own driveway."
Right.
Because that way, you don't sit there in the morning, wait the other guy starts shoveling out before you go out, you know?
Exactly.
That's my perspective on it, but, and then somebody else said, "I'm going to Florida, I'll let somebody else do it," you know? But I'm saying, if you have a big plot, I understand here you have smaller, so I understand a little better, but I always said, if you have the big plot, and the attorney says, "Hey, well, Mr. Linnahan, it's approved." I said, "Yeah, I know, I know, but I'm telling you, I don't like it, but even though, I would vote for it because it's in the regulations and it's approval," so. So basically, this would just be to, so there'd be agreement between the two of them to maintain that area for the parking, I imagine, right?
Yep, exactly.
Okay. All right, that was the only question I had, was just making sure they're getting back there, and they can get in and out, no problem. Okay. Let's double-check the comments from staff. I think they were covered by both the other board members, so. Yeah, as Jerry indicated, you know, at first look, I think if, what do you need, eighty feet for frontage? They look at it, and it's pretty much a lot of relief, but if you look at the other houses in the neighborhood, it really brings it into the same characters, the other ones, which is important. Because obviously, if all the others were eighty, then you come in, try to have a sixty and a fifty four, that'd be a tough request. But, yeah, okay. You all have your answers, so you're all set there, you just need our final go-ahead, huh? Okay. Okay, I think I'm all set there, so, thank you.
Can you start?
Sure, go ahead.
This is one of the best elevations I've seen to show how the house would fit in.
Thank you.
This was well done.
Thank you.
It really was. It looks like you took a picture of the house already there, so it was actually, yeah, that was well done.
I mean, we like to see that, I mean, obviously, especially when you go in for the lot reduction in the front.
Yeah, it's just easier to visualize it that way.
I'm sorry?
It's just easier to visualize it that way.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, and especially when you have the streetscape feel, yeah, it's nice.
You know, it's consistent with the neighborhood.
Yeah, and it's not, not too big, but, yeah. Well, thank you for that, we appreciate that, and that, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so the only request we have tonight is for the definitive subdivision.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the definitive subdivision with the following condition that the applicant obtain stormwater approval, with the appropriate revisions to the plan as noted by stormwater team regarding sewer connection.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor?
Second.
A motion made and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair, vote yes. Any opposition? Hearing none. So the vote carries, three in favor, none against. Good luck, we wish you well.
Thank you so much.
You're right, have a good night. Okay, moving along on the agenda, we have a pre-application hearing. Now, let's see, this is one-twenty-five Perry Street. ZR Development Group LLC has requested a pre-application hearing with the Lowell Planning Board regarding a proposal for the above address. The property is currently utilized as a church, the applicant would like to convert the parcel into thirty multifamily housing units. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record. My name is John Geary of Geary &amp; Geary LLP, thirty-two Church Street, Lowell, Mass. I'm here tonight representing ZR Development Group, and with us tonight is Jim Zorvis, one of the principals. We also have Mark O'Hara, the engineer for the project. As the chairman mentioned, we're here for a pre-hearing relative to the redevelopment of one-twenty-five Perry Street, which is in the TMU zoning district and sits on about sixteen thousand square feet of land. We've provided the board with a brief narrative of the proposal, as well as a preliminary site plan and preliminary floor plans. The applicant is proposing to redevelop this existing three-story building into, which is currently a church, as the chairman mentioned, into thirty, into a thirty-unit multifamily residential development. The breakdown of the units includes seven studio units, fourteen one-bedroom units, and nine two-bedroom units. The units will range in size from about five hundred square feet to just a little bit over a thousand square feet. The site is currently occupied by the Tabernacle, appraised Tabernacle Worship Church. Buildings in need are thorough renovations, including building, including siding, windows, doors, roofing, paving surfaces, the, basically, the entire mechanicals. The developer will have to go right through the building. The property also abuts a large strip of land, which is owned by the townhouses at Concord Crossing, which is a condominium development located at eighty Rogers Street. Their parcel goes almost the full length of Concord Street along the back, and they've entered into some discussions and have come up with a tentative agreement to lease their space for additional parking for this site. And as you see, and that is indicated in the site plan, without that additional space, we'll be well short on our parking requirements. Perry Street is a mix of residential neighborhood businesses, commercial, and industrial uses. From Rogers Street to just about one-seventeen Perry Street is what, which is one building beyond this property, most of the uses are commercial in nature. You start to get into the residential end of the street, across from one-seventeen Perry Street, on the east side of the street, and that carries over to about Pond Street, and then you run into neighborhood businesses again. National Grid is also a large landowner on the west side of Perry Street, on the Concord River side of the street. Peter's project summary basically reiterates what I just said, but Peter makes a good point when he indicates that introducing residential use in this portion of Concord Street would add some vibrancy to the neighborhood. I agree with that. I also believe it will soften the somewhat industrial look of the street, which is currently there, in a predominantly residential neighborhood. So in addition to the site plan and special permit we'd need from this board, we also need some dimensional relief from the Zoning Board of Appeals, in addition to relief for parking, we're still short on our parking requirements. We expect that the timing of the presentations would be, we would go before the zoning board first, and come back before this board. So that's a quick rundown of the project. I'll let Mark speak to some of the engineering aspects of the project now, and then we'll open it up for discussion, I guess. Mark?
Thank you, John. For the record, Mark O'Hara, O'Hara Engineering, Twenty-One Mansion Drive, Lowell. From an engineering perspective, there's really not an awful lot that we're proposing here, other than, because right now, the entire site is impervious. But where the parking is proposed on the other lot, that contains some pervious material. It also drops away quite a bit, it's about eight feet in vertical elevation difference. So with the understanding of, you know, the stormwater policy with City of Lowell, that area would, what we would likely do is build a retaining wall. And the actual location of the retaining wall, based on the comments that we received, would probably extend back further, so that we can provide some additional green space and landscape. It's a bit of a mess back there right now, there are a few mature trees, I'm not sure if they're deciduous trees, I'm not sure if they're, you know, native New England-type trees, or I think I might have seen that some were Norway maples, which is an invasive species. So those trees would most likely come down, but they would be replaced with some native trees, local, you know, meeting the city's standards, you know, and we haven't really discussed bringing in a landscape architect, but I think that's something we would be favorable, you know, to doing. And other than that, I think we'd be, I haven't, you know, really, I haven't dove into the existing utilities, so if the sewer and the water need to be upgraded, we'd work with staff and upgrade the sewer and the water to whatever their recommendations are. So that's, that's pretty much about it from an engineering perspective.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. So we're happy to answer any questions or concerns of the board, or for that matter, listen to constructive criticism. Ultimately, the goal here is to come back with a good project and make the project successful.
Any questions, board members?
I just have a comment regarding landscaping. I assume you're going to develop a landscaping plan.
Absolutely, we will be hiring a landscape architect to present a landscape design.
And I don't know, in the square footage of your parking area, there is a requirement, as you know.
Yes.
Within parking areas for landscaping as well.
Landscape open space, correct.
Right. What does that, I don't...
Attorney Gary, as you know, it's always intended to be constructive, it just doesn't come off that way sometimes.
Is it the tone?
Yeah, I don't know. No, I think, as noted by staff and as yourself, it's an opportunity to soften that look. And obviously, I think, add some additional customers for some of the neighborhood businesses over there, and make that a little bit more vibrant, and a little bit more sustainable for the local businesses, so there's a lot of upside to that. You know, the parking's a conundrum, I'd almost like to see the City Zoning Subcommittee just, just, just address the parking. Because what happens is that we sit here and we talk about parking theory as it's applied today, and that's the argument you get when you go before the Zoning Board of Appeals, and you look for relief, or you come before this board, but it's widely considered acceptable, we've, there's plenty of data that shows with the smaller units, it can accept it, but yet, that's not what the City Zoning Code shows, where everything's, you know, you're looking for variance, and it creates conflict, and I think it probably should be addressed in a global way, and have the conflict take places. What do we really want here as a city? places. What do we really want here as a city politically, and from a management perspective, and from a planning perspective, and a development perspective? Make it a heck of a lot easier for everybody. Everybody serving on the boards, and everybody that comes to that podium. So, that's my...
I couldn't agree with you more. Especially when you're dealing with these smaller units, it's, you know, the requirement is two parking spaces per dwelling unit. That's what the code says. That's what we need to provide, and if we can't, we need to seek relief.
Right.
But, you know, the likelihood of having two cars for some of those small units is very remote, in my view.
Yeah.
So, but, you know, you're right. Until that's addressed, we have to seek relief for parking.
And then quite frankly...
And it makes it look like a, like we're, you know, an overly dense project.
Right.
It really isn't when you consider the size of the units.
Right. And that's my frustration with that. And I think it either has to be, and if the statement is from a political, as you know, it has to go through a vote, and politically, if that doesn't, you know, they still feel that that's not the proper way, and we still want the two, then that's fine. But then that's what the board should adhere to, then. And then we get what we get as a result of what...
Right.
Yeah. So anyways, that's my...
I agree.
I could step off the soapbox, but I did. But it creates more conflict than it should be, I think. I really do.
Absolutely.
So, with that, you know, I certainly, we've gone through this before. Fortunately, your client's probably too familiar with it. But I think, based on the makeup of the units, it looks like it's something that is workable. I will caution you, though. I went, now, it is a church. I don't know how active it is. I went to check out the site on Sunday. Gotta respect the situation over there. I took pictures. You can't fit a car on the street, even, in front of that building. I mean, I've got the pictures. I was actually gonna blow them up. But I mean, you can't fit a car on either side of the street in front of that building, which I thought was interesting. And I told the chairman too. I went down Concord Street, because it's one-way.
During church services?
I don't know. That was, you know, it was Sunday. I didn't think about it, to be honest with you. There's probably more cars there than during the week.
I go by all the time. It's on my way to my office, back to my office, and I never see cars there. But I don't go by on Sunday.
Yeah, no.
I make a point of that, though, but...
Yeah, and that's why I was like, "Oh, well, maybe this is just like the wrong time." And I, believe me, before you come back to us, I will, I will go by. I just gotta show you this.
We will figure that out as well.
What time is it, Jerry?
Ten twenty-eight.
Ten twenty-eight, yeah. And like I said, it didn't dawn on me. Usually, I go on a Sunday, and I kinda, you know, I see less. And it was like, whoa. So, but, you know, obviously, I think, you know, once that, you have a date, and the abut is getting notified, you may have some concerns, and rightfully so. It is congested, you know, Concord Street. I got caught. There was an ambulance, and the traffic backed up. You couldn't turn around. Cars on each side. It's one-way going the other direction, and it just backed up and backed up. And I just sat there for a minute.
And I would imagine the stability of a multifamily residential development will do away with some of that congestion.
Well, yeah, on a Sunday, you wouldn't be looking at something like that, assuming that's what it was. Like I said, I was surprised when I turned down the street. So, but no, and then the other thing is, do you know, you know, the project behind you, that's the old Mother Hubbard site you're talking about, right?
That's right.
You know, when we had approved that, there was supposed to be a little lockway that was going in the back, and, you know, really open space for the, for that condo development. And I don't know if that is part of...
It's unused land.
Yeah, so it looks like they haven't done anything.
Yeah.
Okay, it's interesting. Okay.
You know, certainly would have to make sure we're not in conflict with anything that was...
Yeah, just if DPD staff could even look at that, just it just may not be. I know there was a lot of, it was an odd lot. It was very long and narrow all the way back there, so.
And then between that parcel, there's still land that the National Grid owns.
Right.
To the riverbank.
Right, right, yeah. No, no question about it. That was, that was an interesting project. That was supposed to look a little better than it does, but that was when we found out how important it was to look at the floor plan and look at the architectural renderings. Because when your floor plan doesn't allow you to put windows where the architect puts beautiful windows, you don't end up having the plan that you approved. So, that was an interesting situation. So, no, I think it's a, I think it's a good reuse of the building. And that becomes the typical, the laudary per dwelling unit. Again, if you followed that, you'd put eight units in that building.
Yeah.
Right? And they'd be four thousand square foot units. It's all practical. So, and it's just, you know, obviously, it makes it a little bit more difficult to develop. But, thank you.
I just have a couple of comments. I think for a project like this, we'd be looking for the transportation demand management plan, like we've done in the past, Attorney Gary. I know you're very familiar with those. Usually, if Caleb was here, he usually picks up on those right off the bat. Obviously, you know, I'd like to see how the parking comes out, and, you know, what you can pick up for relief on that. And I know you said you're trying to pick up some more parking, so that'd be important. And, I mean, we are familiar with Perry Street. I mean, we've approved the Codewash at one end. We approved Mother Hubbard at the other end. We even approved the Lutheranian church that was converted to the condos years ago. And I was telling Jerry, I remember back when I had my paint booth years ago, my dad would, I would go to church there, be out in thirty minutes, and then we'd go to the Pewter Park and get our muffins. And Jerry's like, "Oh, my God, the Pewter Park."
I used to go there. Probably saw you at both places.
Yeah, probably. I mean, both of them are good places to be at. And I know we've had a couple of other units that've come in on Perry Street that I think they wanted to convert it to a two to a three.
The Codewash at the other end.
Yeah, like I said, we started with the Codewash first, and then the same on Concord. We had a few they wanted to convert from two to three families. So we're very familiar with Perry Street. Like you said, when we had the old Mother Hubbard, we had to do a site visit inside, and we were warned to wear old clothes that we probably don't want to wear again.
Oh, yeah, the odors.
I remember the odor from...
It was in the woodwork. And a lot of times, they tried to take that woodwork out and ship it to other locations, and they weren't sure what they were gonna do with it. But they said it was really imperminated right into the wood. We're like, whoa.
Right.
Yeah, because that was there for many years, huh?
Just one other comment. Your parking lot is pretty large. You should take a close look at outside lighting.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I remember, like we said, when we approved the Mother Hubbard, I remember we had to deal with, like you say, National Grid behind there because that long strip. I mean, that was there back then as well.
Yeah.
Right, yeah. So, but, yeah, I'm familiar with the area. Like I said, and as soon as I saw the application, I knew where the church was. Like I say, sometimes there's a cut through going through there. But besides that, let me think. We had some other comments from staff, but I think we addressed them.
You're not gonna have air conditioning units hanging out of the building like you got there right now. Yeah, no.
Probably central, I imagine. Yeah, besides that, I have no further comments.
I have none, no.
None? Jerry, anything else?
Just, you know, the economics of it. It would be a great building to probably put some rooftop gardens or something. I don't know what the, from an engineering perspective, but, you know, you just may have some opportunity just to try to do something there. It may not be that elaborate, but it really would be a great opportunity to try something like that.
Looking over the Concord River there?
Way to review.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, no, absolutely, yeah. And you're lacking, you know, open space. I think it'd be an opportunity there, so, yeah.
Because those other condos that we approved on Lauren Street, that John Dowling did, they were on the other side, that abutted right to the Concord River there.
Exactly, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And then across there, behind the liquor store, we have the park that was named after Julian Dummer, who was on NemCog. I remember when I was on NemCog, I remember meeting her. And that's that little park right there. And they're trying to open up more of that whole Concord River, you know, go through the area. I mean, open space and the kayaking in the spring, but they're trying to do that walkway through. Yeah, so something like that could be, could work out nice in the future.
Right.
Yeah. You don't really envision it at first, but it takes a little while to develop.
Yeah, and National Grid has recently cleaned up the area around there. They had an old dilapidated building. I'm not sure what the use of that building was, but it's gone now, thankfully. So it's, you know, the area's starting to shape up.
Yeah, it is, yeah. Well, good luck. We wish you well.
Thank you very much. We appreciate all your time and enjoy the holidays.
Welcome. Happy Thanksgiving.
Nice project.
Okay, moving along on the agenda. Any of the board members have any further comments or follow-up?
The historic board. We did not meet the last time. We've very slow know of a current schedule. Our next meeting is December 12.
December 12, okay.
Any comments, Jerry? No?
No, nothing. You know, NemCog, we're just, these new executive directors still getting settled in, and has a pretty aggressive agenda, and has been meeting with town officials as well, and the districts. So, looking forward to things to come from NemCog, and hopefully looking for some regional approaches, some regional solutions to some of the challenges.
Yeah. I just have one comment. I had the opportunity to do the groundbreaking for the Acre Crossing.
Oh, yeah.
We saw staff there. Peter was there, with Dylan and Fran, and a lot of people from, the mayor and the city councilors, and, you know, a lot of people from St. Jean Doc. I was there, and Will Sucey, the developer, and made some comments about the place and how good it looked, and how it was coming along nicely. And I told him how I thought this was much better planned than what we've seen in the past. And we always said, how St. Jean Doc was a good neighbor. And we had faith that something nice would be going on that lot. And I think it's really gonna help the acre right there with that site being developed, and the way to come along with it. It's looking really nice, and we wishing the best over there. And I think it's really gonna turn out to be a really nice project. And, you know, obviously, when we see stuff come before us, I always, you know, remember what Arthur Hamer used to try to teach us, you know, is our job is just to try to make everything come before us, a little better site if we can. And, you know, by putting that two cents together, hopefully, we can just make the applicant's project to come before us a better site. And I think that, basically, would turn out at that site there compared to what we saw in the past. So, we wish them well on that.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just take an opportunity to pat ourselves on the back, and yourself as the chairman, and Richard serving on the board, and other members at the time. But we took a lot of heat for that other project, as you know, and it was appealed.
Sure.
And staff did a great job. And I think Christine McCall did such a fantastic job.
Sure.
Because we really, we took our knocks for that other project. And it was not appropriate for that site. We made the right decision. We made the right decision.
Yeah, I remember Christine being deposed and down in court, and how they, they went after Christine, saying that she said this, and she said that. But most of the stuff is what the board said. It wasn't what she said. And obviously, she represented us very well, and we're very fortunate on that. And like I said, it's gonna turn out very nice. And even there was some people from the neighborhood who showed up and watching it go, and talking about it, and saying how it's gonna come out nice. So, we appreciate the invite for that. It was nice to see some things that we approved. And obviously, going up Merrimack Street, they have that other building on the right that's starting to be developed there, right past City Hall. Was that the House of Hope, I think it was?
It's so long ago, I forget, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, but that's all in construction now.
I think it was Attorney Jim Flood brought that before us.
Yeah, I think it came in the first, and then it came back for revision, didn't it?
Yes.
And all that's being developed there. So things are starting to look really good in the acre. So, we appreciate the invite, and things are going well. So, saying that, I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Me too. Everybody have a happy and wonderful Thanksgiving.
Thank you. So at this point in time, we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
Go move. Second?
All in favor say aye. Chair votes ayes. Any opposition? Hearing none. We are adjourned. Good night, and thank you, everybody.